Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Gig Harbor City Council meeting of Monday, September 26th. The time is 5:32 PM, and I will turn it over to our city clerk for a roll call on our new Alcam. Hi, Josh.
Councilmember Barber.
Here.
Member Denson.
Here.
Member Henderson.
Here.
Member Lykens.
Here.
Member Rothenberg.
Here.
Member Storset.
Here.
And councilmember.
Here.
All seven present and accounted for.
Great. And would you all please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we begin this council meeting, we would like to recognize that we are gathered on not only the ancestral and traditional lands of the Skovapch band of the Pial tribe of Indians, but also on the site of one of the largest and longest standing historic villages of the people, the original inhabitants of the Gig Harbor area. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, council. Um, so we are fortunate to have with us tonight Jason Gautier, our Shape manager. And as for the, for the public's knowledge, Shape stands for South Sound Housing and Affordability Partners. And I am one of, is it 15 now? Mayors, Jason, the part of this interlocal agreement, well, the city, 15 cities. And there are some council members and some deputy mayors and city managers, I think, that represent some of the different cities on this group. And it's to help us with our affordable housing projects that we're going to be getting into. So Jason, it's an honor to have you here this evening and looking forward to your presentation on our legislative or Shape's legislative priorities for the next session.
Thank you, Mayor Markley, and thank you to the council for tonight's invitation. Again, for the record, Jason Gautier, South Sound Housing Affordability Partners manager. So tonight's briefing is on Shape's draft 2023 legislative agenda. We're providing this presentation tonight with the intention of gathering reaction questions, feedback from the council as we prioritize, or as we prioritize the development of our 2022 work plan. And we seek transparency and member wide engagement when adopting these membership pieces. And we are looking forward to getting your feedback tonight. Your feedback tonight will be utilized in the refinement of our legislative agenda. And the draft you'll see has been developed with input from the majority of our Shape members and a collection of stakeholders. And I should have, sorry about that. I should have started off by sharing my screen for you all. And we'll move on to the second slide.
No worries.
This evening's presentation will review previous legislative agendas from Shape, our 2023 legislative priorities, a proposed support monitor opposed agenda, and then a timeline leading up to the 2023 session. I'll reiterate, this is all in draft form, looking for your feedback tonight. So looking at our historical overview of Shape legislative agenda, since the 2020 session, the formal and informal collaboration of what is now Shape has developed legislative priorities for consideration by our Pierce County Legislative Delegation. And as part of tonight's presentation, I felt it was appropriate to give a little bit of historical background on those priorities. The 2020 priorities included investments in the Housing Trust Fund, flexible local funding options, equitable allocation of that Housing Trust Fund, and then utilizing Pierce County as a home to pilot programs and policy to provide attainable housing for all. The 2022 session saw a lot of success, expansion of availability of the multifamily tax exemption to smaller jurisdictions, which happened with Senate Bill 5287. Resources to fund rent foreclosure prevention and utility assistance, preserving and funding the Housing Trust Fund, and then local graduated REIT options was also on that agenda. And then last year's agenda was a little, had a few more pieces, providing funding for comprehensive plan updates, which AWC and the Coalition and the cities were successful in getting. Funding policy, funding and policy decisions in support of affordable homeownership. This is where we saw a lot of success. Last year's Housing Trust Fund saw an unprecedented supplemental year budget of $114 million with $25 million dedicated to affordable homeownership capital investments. Increasing the Housing Trust Fund, creating new resource and revenue tools for local governments, reform to CIPA to streamline review, this was successful with Senate Bill 5818. Prioritizing resources and policies to limit evictions and creating more tools for local governments to fund lackland acquisition around transit centers. So when we look at developing, looked at developing our 2023 draft agenda, we use the priorities of previous years as an initial guide for our focus areas. So as we saw, those focus areas were ensuring funding to create affordable housing with a, with a focus on affordable homeownership, tools and options for local governments to create and fund affordable housing, and then also relief from or support to, support to comply with state requirements regarding land use. So now we come up with our draft 2023 Shape legislative priorities. Stability, subsidy, and supply. Starting with our stability section, we focus on two areas. First, the creation and expansion of aging in place options that seek to improve the quality of life for seniors in our communities, such as providing opportunities for aging residents to affordably retain their homes. We've heard time and time again about the importance of protecting aging members of our communities on fixed or lower incomes from a rising tax burden and supporting their ability to age in place in accessible environments. Second, supporting the creation of local anti-displacement options. Adding these anti-displacement options has become a priority both in high cost regions like, like ours and with new state changes to the housing elements of the comprehensive plan. Adding additional options at the disposable local municipalities is paramount in this coming session as we move into the 2024 cycle. And I see, Councilmember Henderson, your hand is up. I'm happy to take questions now or save them to the end. Up to you, sir.
Well, it's up to me. I have a real quick question. Can you give an example of what a local anti-displacement option would be?
Sure. One of our members has been working with myself and their contract lobbyist, looking at some property tax exemptions for seniors and rental housing. So we have, we have existing property tax exemptions for seniors who own their own homes, but we also are looking at seniors who haven't had the ability in their lives to purchase a home or no longer own a home, but are seeing their rents rise because of those rising property tax burdens. So how can we, are there tools available or can we create tools to, to help sort of hold their rental prices in place? The same with, with jurisdictions that have new transit investments coming. They are worried about residents being displaced around those transit centers as those transit center areas become a little more high value with more development options. And how can we, how can we help folks that have maybe lived there affordably for years now with new options for housing development coming in that might get displaced? And what are those options for those, for those folks?
Cool. Thanks. Yeah. I just hadn't heard that term before.
Sure. I'm sure you'll hear more this coming year in the, with the comp plan coming up. This is a requirement of the housing elements of the comprehensive plan update. So we'll move on now to our subsidy priority, which is our largest priority. First, again, as we always have, fully asking the legislature to fully fund the Housing Trust Fund. Look, Department of Commerce looks to ask the governor's budget to include a $400 million investments in the Housing Trust Fund, the largest investments that we've seen in the last 10 years in the trust fund in the biennial budget is about $180 million, so nearly doubling if that were to, that would be added to them budgets. So put in the Housing Trust Fund priority since day one of Shape's legislative letters. We'll also ask the legislature to continue its dedicated funding for affordable homeownership. As I mentioned, last year's budget had a $25 million investment in affordable homeownership in the trust fund, and we'll continue to advocate for that investment. And I see councilmember Rothenberg, let's see your hand up there.
Yes, one of your 2020 priorities was the equitable allocation of the trust fund. Can you tell me how that works? And if, if it was a priority then, then I'm sure it's in place now. What does that mean, equitable allocation?
So if we go, looking back to the, looking, I've looked back at the, the investments in Housing Trust Fund dollars in Pierce County projects over the last, well, since the 2008 session. Since the 2008 session, we've seen an investment for the Housing Trust Fund in its total allocations, about 6% of trust fund investments. That's about a $900 million investment across the state. 6% of those investments have found themselves in the Pierce County. During that timeframe, Pierce County's population is approximately 14% of the population of the state of Washington. Obviously, obviously Pierce County has seen growing housing costs, the need for affordable housing expanding and on us unable to meet that need. So that equitable distribution of that trust fund simply is telling, asking the legislature to continue to ensure investments in Pierce County projects. Now, the Housing Trust Fund is awarded typically on a competitive basis. But as we get through the subsidy section, and you'll see on your slide right now, support funding for member, member identified priority projects. This will be Shape's role in working with our member jurisdictions. If they have capital investments for affordable housing projects, Shape will support those direct investments via the Housing Trust Fund. So more money, more of the fair share of that large scale investment for Pierce County.
How has that been working out since then? Have we been, Pierce County been getting more of a fair share?
So in the last three sessions, in the last three sessions, I'd have to go back and think of my, I'll go, I will follow up with you with the exact number of investments. The one thing that I do know we've seen is more direct investments, which tells me our delegation and a previous to this, I was an affordable housing developer, and we saw great success with our local government supporting those direct allocations. I'd have to have time of the last three sessions of telling you we've got equitable distribution in Pierce County, but it's definitely over that 6% historical marker.
You don't need to send me and follow up with me. That's good. Just, just general information. Thank you.
Certainly. And these numbers are public. Happy to, I'm still going to follow up, sir. But only because that's the way I am. And Mayor Markley knows that. Seconds here.
Yes, I do. And I appreciate.
Yeah. Develop and extend state and local revenue options to fund the development of affordable housing. Broadly, this speaks to the need for more options to assist the public sector in funding affordable housing development. And specifically, we'll encourage the legislature to remove, or at minimum, push back the sunset on the collected, collection of what we call 1406 funds. This is a sales tax remittance that the state sends to qualifying jurisdictions. So we retain a portion of the state's sales tax in Pierce County. Both the county and I think seven Pierce County jurisdictions collect these dollars to fund affordable housing investments. We're asking for this extension to align with a longer term planning horizon. 1406, the sales tax remittance program expires 20 years after jurisdictions opted into it. So it expires before the end of the 2024 planning horizon. And with new requirements in the housing element of your comprehensive plan, we feel at minimum the states extending that through that planning horizon would be appropriate. This may also include tools to acquire property and fund the development of affordable housing near transit centers, which has been a priority for a number of years for our members in the sound transit corridor. Third, funding to facilitate the acquisition of buildings and real property that can be utilized to provide affordable housing. Between the most recent biennial and supplemental capital budgets, the legislature has invested more than $4 million in rapid capital acquisition programs. Councilmember, this speaks to a little bit to your equitable distribution. Of this $4 million investment, Pierce County projects have seen less, less than $20 million from that $4 million investment. We seek to make these dollars more flexible and localized in their approach. We see a need to make acquisition funds more market responsive in a market where we are seeing rising opportunities to acquire multifamily buildings and transition them to fully or partial affordable housing. And then finally, supporting funding for member identified priority projects. If a member government has a priority project for funding that will produce affordable housing, we're proposing to our board that those projects become a priority of Shape. We've already had one member reach out to us with a priority project, and we're encouraging others as they identify them to put them on our agenda. And then our last priority area, supply. First, expanding support for local land use planning. This includes housing action implementation grants, planned action EIS supports, which have not been something that the state has invested in previously, to continue local planning efforts to create more and more diverse types of housing. Supporting the work of our local planning departments is paramount in the creation of, in the creation of attainable and affordable housing. Second, the expansion of the multifamily tax exemption program. Where we asked the legislature to extend the MFT tool beyond the current sunset date of 2026 for the newly eligible municipalities and allow the incentive to be utilized to preserve and create affordable units in existing multifamily buildings. And then finally, providing options and support for regulatory streamlining and system updates. Whether it's further, further CIPA reforms to streamline review of infill developments to free up our local resources and staff, whether it's grant funds to support permit system updates or mending the state building code to safely legalize single stair apartments, which is a priority of some of our members. It's critical that the legislature understand the options they have to facilitate and expedite the creation of housing. Now we move to our support oppose monitor agenda. In our support, these are not priorities, but will be pieces that Shape will work with our delegation before and during session on. First, supporting infrastructure funding via flexible funds like the Public Works Assistance Account and the Connecting Housing, the Infrastructure Program to help cities and towns fund basic infrastructure needs, which are critical to the development of housing. Supporting surplus land disposition policies to provide greater flexibility for homeownership development opportunities for low and moderate income households. Opposing the preemption of local land use authority. We also address the opposite side of this with a number of our priorities in the supply section, but this was a priority for a majority of our members. And we do anticipate, as I'm sure you do, legislative efforts to establish statewide land use mandates. Monitor proposals to increase access to homeownership opportunities. This includes condominium liability form efforts and recommendations made by the homeownership disparity work group. Supporting rental assistance to limit evictions. After conversations at the urging of some board members, after conversation with tenant advocates and the rental housing industry, it was clear that some continued investment from the state for rental assistance is a critical piece to avoid, avoidable evictions. And then supporting operating funding for permanent supportive housing. As the legislature has invested in large amounts of capital in the acquisition of buildings for use or shelter and supportive services, it's now important that the legislature recognize the need to provide ongoing operating support for these types of facilities. So where are we in our timeline before session? So as I wrap today, we'll go through a few pieces. Our executive board first heard a similar presentation to this. It's changed a little bit on September 2nd. We spent the last month offering our member governments opportunity to give feedback on our legislative agenda. On October 7th, we anticipate bringing this forward to the board or version of this to the board for approval and adoption. Through October, we'll develop our supporting materials. November through December, meeting with our legislative delegation. And then January 9th, the 2023 105 day long session starts. And Shape will be engaged, Shape will be engaged with our member cities, your in-house and contract lobbyists to support this agenda to ensure the tools in place to build and preserve affordable, attainable housing. And that brings me to the close. So I'm going to take a breath, stop sharing my screen and take your questions.
Thank you so much, Jason, for that presentation. Councilmember Wick.
Yes. Thank you, Jason. That was an excellent presentation. I, I heard you mention contract lobbyists. Are, are you lobbying group or do you have lobbyists that work specifically for Shape?
We do not, we do not employ contract lobbyists through Shape. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a recovering, recovering registered lobbyist. So it's in my bones a little bit, this part. This is one of the things that gets me excited about this work because as you all do understand the power of the state legislature, we, but we will work with, I know City of Gig Harbor is blessed to work with the folks at Gordon Thomas Honeywell and Josh. So you've got excellent representation there. We'll work with Josh. A lot of our other members work with GTH folks as well. So we'll, we'll work with them to push this agenda. But I would anticipate that I will spend a little bit of time in Olympia both before and during session, supporting a pro housing agenda.
And will you actually be talking to representatives?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jason? Okay, not seeing any, Jason, but council, if you do have questions that you think of after, let me know before the October 7th Shape meeting, and I can bring, bring those to Jason. And then if there's anything that we feel that the whole group should know or hear comments, we'll make sure that they hear that on the October 7th board meeting. So thanks again, Jason, for being here, and we hope you enjoy this beautiful, warm September evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Good to see you all. And maybe I'll see a few of you in Olympia in a few months.
Yeah. Thanks. You too. Okay, so, um, council, we will now go into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss the acquisition of real estate per RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110 parentheses one parentheses parentheses B, and action may be taken following the executive session. So I believe Jeff and Daniel will join us over there, council. So you should have the link. If you don't, let Josh know or myself, and we can get that over to you.
The executive session is extended an additional 10 minutes until 6:16 PM. The executive session is extended an additional five minutes until 6:21 PM.
Hi, everybody. Welcome back to the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of, or I'm sorry, City Council Meeting of Monday, September 26th. The time is 6:22 PM, and we have just returned from executive session where action will be taken.
Great. At this time, or Councilmember Denson, sorry, maybe you've got it.
I think I've got it. Okay, let's see. Um, I move to authorize the mayor to amend and sign a purchase and sale agreement with, for the Shaw Peschek property conducive to terms discussed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, council. All right, so moving on to the mayor's report. Um, I was so excited to attend the AWC Mayor's Exchange Conference on Wednesday of this last week in Richland. Beautiful city. I had never been there, right on the river. And I think there were about 45 mayors there from across the state. And we talked about every, anything and everything, but what was really cool is, you know, there were cities of 300 or less and cities of over 900,000 represented there. And we all have the same issues that we're struggling with. And that was oddly comforting to know that our cities are going through similar things. And, you know, as mayors, we're going through similar things, our councils are experiencing similar things, police departments are experiencing very similar things. And so it was just really, really nice to be able to talk with all these amazing leaders and then hear from them what's working for their cities and what isn't, and be able to just exchange back and forth just stories and wisdom and ideas. And so from that came some really great relationships that were formed and some cities that are doing some things really well that I am going to actually take some staff and have a field trip to a couple of these cities and, and see what they're doing and learn about how they're doing it well and just learn, learn from other people. So it was really, really a great conference. I'm very glad I went. And then the next item of business is very important. Councilmember Denson had a birthday yesterday. And so we need to redeem ourselves, council, from the last time we sang to Councilmember Rothenberg. So if you wish, and you would like to turn your microphone on, let's see if we can sing to Councilmember Denson and do it better than the study session.
Need a karaoke screen to stay on tune.
Right? I know. Okay, so I don't know the note to start on, but maybe. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Robin, 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 Robin. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday.
You're too kind. All our microphones are off sync, so, but that was from our heart, Robin. It was from our heart. Thank you.
That was a metric.
Maybe we should just get a recording next time.
Agreed. We can find something on YouTube.
Yeah. Play someone else singing happy.
Well, this is going to be on YouTube and.
Yes, maybe we'll go viral, council. You never, the council that sings the worst happy birthday ever. We could, we could be known for that. Um, hopefully not, but, and then, um, lastly, I want to announce a couple of celebrations. We are going to celebrate the acquisition of the 11.5 acres for, of land for conservation North Creek Phase One on October 4th at 5:30 PM, featuring an un groundbreaking ceremony with project stakeholders, including Pial tribal council member Anna Bean and representatives of the Lyons Family Trust, the former property owners. And the public is encouraged to attend and celebrate this landmark conservation effort. We're still getting details finalized, and so look for the gigabyte this Friday. We'll have all the details, and there will be a press release going out to the paper. So share that, and we hope that you guys will come and that the public will come. And then additionally, we hope you will join us on October 6th at 5:30 PM to celebrate the completion of the Edin Boatyard House remodel. So excited for that. This effort took many years, and the city is excited to celebrate with our partners at the Gig Harbor Boat Shop. So come on out for that. The weather's supposed to be really nice so far for both of those events. So I'm crossing my fingers that it will stay that way. So super exciting things coming up, and I will now turn it over to City Administrator Knutson for her report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Just a couple of things to tell you about and also to let the public know who's on the call for the meeting tonight. The city also was able to close on North Creek Salmon Heritage Phase Three, which is this property that is highlighted above Donkey Creek Park right here. So all of this property was recently purchased by the city. We were going to have a, an un groundbreaking ceremony for this property as well. However, that will be postponed due to us coordinating with the Great Peninsula Conservancy. And so I wanted to provide a quick update. Was able to meet with members of the Great Peninsula Conservancy regarding the desire to have a conservation easement in perpetuity over this land to ensure that it will be conserved forever. And Great Peninsula Conservancy has willingly stepped forward, and I'm proud to say that they will be conducting this work free of charge for the city. So that is great news. It's a great partnership that hopefully we can grow between the city and GPC. That being said, as soon as that this event could pass, their board will be November 16th. So we will plan to have the. November 16th, so we will plan to have the conservation easement on the council's, uh, November 14th agenda. And then send it over to them, and once that is complete, we look forward to having the Great Peninsula Conservancy as well as the Hob family with us there on this un groundbreaking and the Gig Harbor Land of Conservation Fund, so that will be another great celebration in November. Let's see, second, I am proud to say that the city partnered with the Peninsula School District on an annual calendar, we were a sponsor, so we will be in all of the PSD of family homes, and we felt that this was an important partnership because the, uh, school districts just underwent a strategic plan that has, um, inspiring and inspiring every child every day. Um, and so these will go into every home where every family from PSD will be able to see all the great things that the school district is doing for our children, noting that they are at school, um, and with the, the school district faculty, sometimes more than they're even around their own families, so it's very encouraging to see the school district taking such, uh, a great approach with our students' learning, uh, in our community. So shout out to, um, our school district. And then two, just really happy things. We had the first annual Shank Shaw Tea Party last week that the police department put on, so special shout out to Chief UC and Lieutenant Douglas and Diane Bertram. Very proud to say that we had 62 staff members attend this nine-hole um, event as well as three council members. And we are looking forward to making this an annual event, potentially with each department taking a hole and kind of having it be, um, department-esque, so maybe Jeff knew what to do around about, um, hole next year where we have to shoot around the hole, so, um, that was just really great, and, let's see, lastly, I don't have any pictures, but we also the city represented at the Rayners game last Friday, and I'm proud to say that they won, all the Mariners and Seahawks lost this weekend. We had quite a few, um, staff members and their families attend the Rayners game, and it was just a really great time had by all. And I say this report just noting that the council's number one priority is a healthy city organization, and we're definitely working to let our employees know that they are, um, our number one priority, and they mean so much to us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, I do have pictures, and I'll be putting those in the Gigabyte this Friday, I've got some, uh, people wearing duck, duck head, rubber duck head costumes and doing the funky duck dance, so that was awesome, you guys would have loved it. Councilmember Wick.
So it was lots of fun, this Waffle Ball game, and so I look forward to it again next year. I was, uh, I was shooting for that, I was trying to get the highest point ever, and sadly, I didn't make that, I guess. But, uh, it was a lot, a lot of fun, so I'm really glad to be out there, and it was great camaraderie to be with, uh, two other council members and our staff, we just enjoyed that time together, so kudos to everyone who put that on, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Starset.
Yes, thanks, I just wanna echo the same thing, that golf tournament was a lot of fun, uh, Chief UC, shout out to you. He got a hole in one, as far as I know, the only one for the day. I don't know if that's the only one he ever got, but probably our best chance on that short course, but also Katrina stole his golf cart, so there was a little bit of havoc out there, a few hazards. But a really good time getting to see so much of the staff out there, it's a beautiful day and a great spot for it, I think it should be a permanent fixture.
I'm thinking it probably will be.
I've opened up a criminal investigation on Katrina for that.
We'll let you know how that one turns out, council. Councilmember Anderson.
Yeah, a ditto to all that's been said, but I, I think, uh, what was most important for me was just looking at the smiles on the city staff faces as they were out there, I mean, if you what was achieved was great, people were having a good time and they were just relaxed, and it was, it was fun. Jeff was out there and it was just nice seeing everybody, so, let's do it again.
Well, thanks, council, that was able to make it, and for your comments. Um, I know the staff really appreciated having you there and had so much fun with you as well, so. And I'm gonna be making sure that the Mayor's Exchange Conference doesn't fall on the same day next year, so that I can be there, 'cause I really missed out. I was so sad to miss it. Um, okay, that, just awesome. Okay, we were, we will move right on to public comment on non-agenda items. Um, Josh, were there any written comments received for non-agenda items this evening?
No written comments this evening.
Okay, alright, so, um, all speakers will have three minutes, and when I call your name, if you, you can press the raise hand button near the bottom of your screen or star 9 on your phone. And you will have, like I said, three minutes, and if you would please state your full name and home address for the record, please. And our first caller is ending in 874.
Yes, Mayor Markley, can you and the council hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, well, I lost about 20 seconds, just to let you know, because it, I got a message saying to unmute myself and you were continuing to talk, so give me 20 seconds on the back end, okay? So, it's Thomas Wick, and I'm at Hunt Street Northwest, Gig Harbor, and I wanted to say good evening to everybody this evening, and I am making a kind of a unique request for public records, and I'm doing it via this forum because your public records officer said that public records requests could be made verbally, email, in person, etc., in a bunch of different ways. But, um, I'm asking that it's contingent upon the repeal of ordinance 1465, because based on that ordinance and based on the, um, city council meeting, it, that request for public records, even though it was clearly identified for litigation purposes, was deemed a fishing expedition, and those records were never produced. So I'm asking the council to take action this evening and repeal ordinance 1465, and then initiate the process to complete that request to public records dated September 25th, 2020. I ask that it be, the records be produced in a manner that's ordinary and customary for litigation purposes, that it be in one dispersment. I acknowledge the state allows municipalities to do multiple dispersments when there's thousands of records, responsive records. So I'm going to wait six months to have one dispersment on one CD, ensuring integrity in the process. I'm trying to think if there's anything else here, and I want to assure the, the council and you, Mayor Markley, it's not a fishing expedition. Um, I'm happy to pay whatever the costs are to get these records. I think that's pretty much it, um. Oh, I wanted to add one last thing. Um, on my first attempt to get these public records, um, I was get, offered a few public records from, um, emails from former city, um, let's see, administrator, and some city staff. I think it was around a six, half dozen, and I did the calculations, and based on that, the city would have taken approximately 28 years. Would have taken the city approximately 28 years to complete the request for public records based on my prior attempt where the city was willing to produce approximately six public records every 30 days. So the city's already disclosed that there's thousands of responsive public records, and you're aware of that, um. So, like I said, if, I just use an example, 2,000 responsive records, and the city produced six records every 30 days, it would be approximately 28 years to complete that request for public records. So, I thank you, Mayor Markley, and the council for allowing me to speak this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak this evening on a non-agenda item? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised, so we will close the public comment and move on to new business, item number one. This is ordinance 1498 repealing section 2.04.020 of the Gig Harbor Municipal Code related to study sessions, and the suggested motion is to approve ordinance 1498. We do need a super majority vote for this item, and our report comes from our city clerk, Josh Stucker.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, good evening, council, this ordinance is before you, uh, for first reading and adoption. It is a, uh, housekeeping ordinance to amend a section of the municipal code that deals with study sessions. Uh, this particular section of the code was last updated in 2017 when council at that time established that it would be holding regular study sessions on the third Monday of each month at 5:30 PM. I think that, uh, code amendment lasted about, for all, about two or three months before a new mayor and council came in and stopped holding study sessions at that time, um, and this code section has been on the books since then. The new counseling guidelines that you've adopted and amended, uh, accounts for when and how council will conduct study sessions. So this whole section is now, um, no longer needed, and the recommendation is to pass this ordinance to just remove this section from the code completely. There's any clarifying questions, I'm happy to answer those, but, uh, that is my presentation.
Great, thanks, Josh. Any questions from council on this item? Okay, I'm not seeing any, um, so I will open the public comment on this agenda item. Josh, were there any written comments received?
There are no written comments on this item.
Okay, and if there is anyone from the public that wishes to speak, you can, uh, press star 9 or the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Um, we have one caller ending in 874. And, uh, reminder, you'll have three minutes, and please state your full name and address for the record, please. Once you're unable to unmute. Oh, we think we lost them.
Yeah, it looks like he's dropped off.
Yes, okay, so then we will close the public comment on this agenda item and open it up for council deliberation and action. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes, I think since this is, uh, house, unlike, that I've moved to, uh, pass the ordinance on the first reading as it's written and presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Starset.
Yes, thanks, do we need to have any other language put in there then about how we do our study sessions, or can we just leave it out? Is that fine?
The council guidelines has, uh, kind of spelled out how you'll do your study sessions. We're, we're not proposing a, a time in the code for those because council's needs can fluctuate, uh, fairly regularly.
Good.
Pretty regularly do them on Thursdays at 2, but that can change, um, depending on council's needs from council to council, so it's just a little bit easier to do it, uh, informally.
Great, thanks.
Okay, um, any other questions from council? Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second, and given that this is a super, super majority vote, I will go ahead and just do a roll call vote, just to make sure we've got it down, Councilmember Wick.
Aye.
Councilmember Liggins.
Aye.
Councilmember Barber.
Aye.
Councilmember Runberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Henderson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Starset.
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you so much, council. And we will move right along to our second item of business, which is our professional services contract with Peterson Structural Engineers Incorporated for Austin Park at Twalka Estuary, the Monument Foundation, and this is for engineering. Suggested motion, move to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a professional services contract with Peterson Structural Engineers Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $2,850. And this report comes to us from our public works director, Jeff Langham. Hi, Jeff.
Thanks, Mayor, good evening, council. Uh, staff does recognize that the proposed contract, um, uh, presented to you tonight is for work previously performed in 2022, and I wanted to note that this is definitely not our standard operating procedure. Uh, instead, we usually provide a management reserve uh, in the scope items for this type of minor change during design. Uh, unfortunately, the original contract with the consultant expired almost a year ago, but, uh, then during construction, we did have a minor change to the structural design provided by the consultant, and we needed to bring them back on and do that amendment, and it just took us a while, and then the consultant a while to get the scope aligned with what the work would actually perform, so. We do appreciate your understanding on this, and, uh, available for any questions you might have.
Thanks, Jeff. Um, any questions from council on, on this item? Councilmember Henderson.
Well, I don't have a question, I just have a compliment, um, a lot of you may not know the basis for this change order, and I give my kudos to Jeff Langham, and who was the other person that you designed this base with, Jeff?
George Planning, construction.
They, they came up with the design, and the consultant then backchecked it and made sure all the structural calculations were good, but in general, it's kind of a geeky thing for us engineers, but it, it vastly improved the stability of the base, allowed us to, uh, later on make adjustments in the overall tilt, if there's any, and it's just a lot stronger than what they had before, and also helps with maintenance as well, so, kudos to our staff for coming up for this, and then getting this just checked, double-checked and everything else, so, well done.
Thank you.
We have amazing staff, that is for sure. Um, any other clarifying questions for council, from council? Okay, not seeing any, I will open the public comment on this agenda item. And, uh, Josh, were there any written comments received?
Written comments for this item.
Okay, alright, so anyone watching online, if you wish to speak on this agenda item, you can press the raise hand button or star 9 on your phone. Okay, not seeing any, so I will close the public comment and go to council deliberation and action. Councilmember Henderson.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a professional services contract with Peterson Structural Engineers Incorporated in the, in an amount not to exceed $2,850 and zero cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I think Starset might have been the, the second on that one, um, all of them's all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes 7-0. Thank you, council. Um, at this time, council, would you like a brief break, or do you want to just keep going?
I vote to keep going, but.
Okay, alright, we'll keep going. Um, so we'll move on to item number three, which is our vendor agreement between Pierce County and City of Gig Harbor for the Low Income Home Water Assistance Program. And the suggested motion is to move to authorize the city administrator to execute and sign a vendor agreement with Pierce County. And again, this report comes from our public works director, Jeff Langham.
Thank you, Mayor. As noted in the council agenda, uh, bill, the US Department of Health and Human Services through Pierce County is providing grants to low-income households to pay a portion of their water and wastewater utility bills. I recognize it is odd for the city to be entering into an agreement as presented here that will only last between now and September 30th of 2022. Uh, but staff originally proposed the authorizing this agreement because we had one utility customer requesting funding for the Pierce County, through Pierce County for this. And it, Pierce County said it only required the grant to be, uh, agreement to be in place a short time so that they could process that one customer's funding application. So, uh, but that said, uh, the city just received an email from Pierce County today noting that they are revising the end date to this agreement with the city and other, uh, water and utility wastewater customers here in the city, or in the county. Uh, they're revising the agreement to instead, uh, end one year later than originally anticipated. So they're putting this program back in place through, uh, September 30th of 2023. So therefore, amending slightly the most suggested motion here, instead I'm requesting the council, uh, authorize the city administrator to execute the agreement as proposed, except with the revised end date in section 3 of the agreement to be September 30th, 2023. And that's my report.
Okay, great, thank you, Jeff.
I'll make that amendment.
Okay, do you want to read that out, or?
Just. Just with that, I I just, okay, the amendment is to extend the. Proposal one year later than what we have in our agenda packet.
So we need to put the motion on the floor with the amendment in it.
Mayor, I will show that the minutes will reflect that Councilmember Rodenberg has made the motion with the amendment as recommended by.
Thank you, Josh.
Yeah.
I know that it's a little hard to come up with the wording on on the fly, so thank you. That is noted. Councilmember.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Barber. And Councilmember Wood.
Um, yes, thank you. I have two questions. One of them is that says the city attorney raised some concerns regarding clarity. Can maybe someone give me some information on that?
Daniel?
I guess that would be me. I I raised some some questions on some of the language. I spoke with Director Langham about those. And about some of the risks associated with that, and I believe the city's determination was that the agreement was fine to move forward. So I'll just leave it at that for privileged purposes, and if there is a desire to speak about that further offline, more than happy to do that.
So because this is now going for a year instead of a month. Does that change any of your concerns? Or the outcome of any of your concerns?
I'll just speak for myself. No.
Okay, thank you. Then my other question is, how do we get the word out to any of our citizens that might be needing to use this program?
Uh, we can publish it on our website. We have. Been relying heavily upon Pierce County. There's a whole website that Pierce County has on this for all utility providers in the county, and so that's something that is available to everybody, but we can. Make it, I'll put it on our website and direct them to the county's website.
How did the, do we have any ideas? So we only had one person who was interested in in using this program. Do we have any idea how they found out about the program?
I'm not sure. I could find out from our utility billing technician. He's the one who provided me with. Connecting me with Pierce County to have this implemented.
Okay, it would be nice if if this is a program that would benefit some of our citizens if they if there was a way to let them know about it. Thank you.
Yeah, I can certainly. Maybe add this to my top five or put it on, you know, do a social media post or something, you know, we'll we'll figure we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Mayor, I also note that Tourism and Communications Director Laura Pettit is listening in the attendee section, so we will talk to her about this tomorrow, and perhaps we can. Get the word out to Laura.
That sounds great. Councilmember Liggins.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering if we could put a printed something line on our utility bills or some type of little paper flyer inserted in the bill. Itself that says having trouble paying this, this is available if you meet these income, you know, with a link to the website. I think that'd be helpful.
I can work with our utility billing folks to do that. We have a section or a bill that allows us to put notes in there.
That'd be great. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Great idea. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I think one other option is put it in a gigabyte. It's a very well-received publication. Gets a lot of readership.
Thank you. Um. Any other clarifying questions from council? Okay, I will open up the public comment for this agenda item. And. Josh, were there any written comments received?
No written comments for this item.
Okay, so anyone that is watching online, if you would like to comment on this agenda item, you can rate push the raise hand button on the bottom of your screen or star nine on your phone. Uh, okay, not seeing any, so I will close the public comment on this agenda item and move to council deliberation and action. Is there a motion?
Well. I'll move.
Okay. Our website, we have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that includes the amendment, correct? Okay, thank you. I'm I I wrote it down and I guess it would just disappeared off my off my line of sight for a minute. Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, great. Motion passes. Seven zero. Thanks, council. Okay, so moving right along to our final. Oh, that was I know that is not. We have one more. That also needs a super majority vote for this one, and this is a first reading and adoption of ordinance fourteen ninety-six, amending the city's personnel salary schedule. And the suggested motion is to move to approve ordinance fourteen ninety-six. And this report comes from our interim HR Director Shannon Costanty. Are you here, Shannon? There you are.
I'm here. Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mary, and good evening, council. Uh, thanks so much for the opportunity to present to you related to the ordinance fourteen ninety-six, as the mayor has mentioned a moment ago, amending the city's personnel schedule. You've seen, of course, the content in your material, but as a reminder, you may recall that we reclassified the code enforcement officer position just a few months ago. Which transferred an employee out of the community services officer role with the police department at that time. Uh, for context, we attempted to recruit for the point six F T E replacement and were unsuccessful for a variety of reasons. This, it was in part because the position needed re-titling and redefining. In order to more effectively represent the duties of the job. And also due to the limitation of hours, twenty-four per week, we interviewed candidates and we just found that the position didn't quite effectively represent the job. And the limitation of hours was really rather a barrier. The needs of the police department have grown and changed, and in order to be consistent and quite frankly, even competitive to the market. We've modeled the modest adjustments to this position after similar agencies. To include increasing the F T E to one point oh, which the current budget accounts for. And to that end, we expect to be more competitive and successful in identifying a successful candidate. So in order to proceed with reclassification of the position at this time, staff is seeking council approval. To amend the salary schedule, which again is included in your materials this evening. The wage you'll see listed has been determined with market data. Uh, for comparable positions in the area and has been approved in coordination with the general non-supervisory unit of the Teamsters Union to include the job description as well. So I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any clarifying questions from council? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much, Shannon. And we will open up the public comment on this agenda item. Josh, were there any written comments received?
No written comments.
Okay. And if there's anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this agenda item. You can push star nine on your phone or the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment. And I'm. Because this is a super majority vote, again, I will do a roll call vote unless there's questions. Councilmember Barber.
Don't we need a motion?
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry. I think I need dinner or caffeine or something. And it's very dark in my office all of a sudden, so I just have the light of my computer screen and it's I think it's messing with my with my. Thinking here. So yes, is there a motion to approve ordinance fourteen ninety-six?
Yes, I I think that this is a really good move for us to make, and so I would like to move to approve ordinance fourteen ninety-six.
Second.
I missed who was first on that one. Josh, did you get it?
I have Councilmember Liggins.
Okay, that's who I had to. Okay, we have a motion and a second, so I'm. On my screen here, Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Henderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Starset.
Aye.
Councilmember Barber.
Aye.
And Councilmember Liggins.
Aye.
Great, motion passes seven zero. Thanks so much, council. This is a long time coming, and I know they'll be very grateful, very, very grateful. Um, so we'll move on to council reports and comments. Councilmember Starset.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So just a short one here, but I met with I chaired the LTAC. That's the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Great to hear from so many organizations in our community, the different events that they bring on and help make Good Harbor so welcoming. You know, of course, for everybody that lives here, but then also for people that travel in from out of town to stay and shop and. And see, you know, many of our great places. So we will have that recommendation coming to the council. It is for. Next month, October twenty-seventh, so look forward to hearing questions, giving feedback and and getting to go forward on it. So appreciate everyone on that committee for their efforts. It's tough to go through these things. And, you know, weed through and and figure out, you know, I don't know, it's it was the first time for me. So I thank Josh Stecker. Thank you so much for helping guide me through this, and Katrina, you helped a lot as well. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Wood.
Yes, thank you. On September the sixth, I attended the Puget, the Paris County Regional Council meeting, and one of our presenters was Sheriff Trolier. And it was really interesting, his presentation. They are still Pierce County is still down fifty officers. Funding, he tells us, is not a problem. Finding officers is of the problem. And and that's, so they're trying to increase the pay, increase the signing bonuses, bonuses, anything to get more more officers there. I found it interesting as well that the jail. Has an abundance, too many folks in there who are having mental difficulties. And again, the problem there is finding workers who want to work in the Pierce County jail, and that's another reason why perhaps. People are not going to jail and and COVID as well. So it was a very interesting presentation by the sheriff. I also made a presentation. Of my meeting from the Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board that I attended. Earlier in the month, and I thought it was really interesting that they have presentation to us and that I relate to Pierce County Regional Council was a population trends. And the region, our region added fifty-two thousand six hundred people between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. That's a lot of people. Everybody wants to live in the Pacific Northwest. Fifty-three percent of the population growth has occurred within half mile of current or planned high-capacity transit. That's good. I think that's a goal from Puget County Puget Sound Regional Council Vision twenty fifty. Another item was on housing trends, and housing construction has been very robust. Approximately twenty-seven thousand four hundred new housing units were finished in twenty twenty-two, and that was the second most annual production since nineteen ninety-two. So things have been going along well. The employment trends, after losing approximately a hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred jobs. Between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-two due to COVID. The region has added more than a hundred and eighty-four thousand one hundred jobs in the past two years, and now we're caught up with the employment numbers of twenty nineteen. And I thought this was interesting, too, because anyway, on the transportation trends in twenty twenty, thirty-four percent of all work trips. Were in a non-single occupancy occupancy vehicle. That was up twenty-nine percent from twenty ten. And so going forward, there is sixteen point nine billion dollars available for transportation funds from the Move Ahead Washington Transportation Package. And as Katrina and I'm sure a lot of other our staff are well, the Puget Sound Regional Council is now working with all cities on preparing their comprehensive plans. Uh, it's going to be a robust discussion, I think, with lots of cities, and I thank our city administrator for and our staff for being a part of that. I'm I'm what that's all my council meeting. I'm wondering if you'd like me to make a council comment now, or if you'd prefer that I wait until later.
Well, you're already unmuted, so go go for it.
Okay, well, thank you. So this is my comment. You know, recently, there's been a lot of discussion about citizens' emails. Every time I receive an email from our citizen, I feel very honored. That citizens have taken your time to write to me about a subject or point of view that's important to you. What's important to you is important to me, and I always have time. Your neighborhood and this city belongs to each one of you. Your taxes pay for this government, our amazing staff, and the services that you receive. Each citizen and their voice is vital to the decisions that I make, so I encourage you to keep those emails coming, share your points of view, because I will be reading and listening. And so to that listening point, I think our citizens are aware that for the past four. And a half years, I've had a program called Jenny Listens once a month available to our citizens, and during the farmer's market, I was down there to listen to citizens and find out what was of interest to them. So Jenny Listens will begin again on November the eighth with an online Zoom meeting. So happy fall, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes. I'm the Government Affairs liaison with the city and the Chamber of Commerce. And just recently, I I'm going to start working with Jeremy Mort of the Chamber on what is a K Business Accelerator Program. It it's in its baby steps as far as I can see, but it's actually an educational program. That will help businesses, young businesses that want to grow. And how to how to do that, and also a factor of that is how to deal with the city when you want to enlarge your business. So I'm looking forward to working with him and bringing their ideas to the city. And in the same time, getting ideas from the city and how we can make this work for businesses to grow more smoothly. And if there is red tape, how can we eliminate some of it? So that's the report on Chamber of Commerce. I'm really looking forward to this, so that's it.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from council? Okay. Seeing none, announcement of upcoming meetings. We have that attached to our agenda as well as our strategic plan for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. And so check out our website, Facebook page for all the events coming up, and the Gigabyte on Friday. Also, we'll have some upcoming events in that. And so with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you, council.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.